We'll call this four thirty seven Board of Education meeting to order. We'll start with open forum. Any school highlights?
Not this evening, no.
Okay, we'll move on to two point oh two, public comment. We do have public comments tonight. So before we start, I am going to read a brief statement. Any district employee patron residing in the district or student attending Auburn Washburn School may speak in open forum. You will have three minutes to speak and the board will have two additional minutes to ask clarifying questions. We asked those speaking to model the behavior and rules we expect of our students and your children when speaking. Please be respectful and courteous during your comments. The board will show you the same level of respect. If your comments are about personnel problems concerning students, parents, or school employees, please note the Board Policy KN requires that you visit with the teacher, principal, or superintendent before bringing the issue to the Board of Education. All matters pertaining to negotiations between any group and the board are only discussed by the board in executive session. So with that, Clint, if you want to come up to the microphone? If you could just start by stating your name for the board.
Hi there. My name is Clint DeVoe. I am a father of a sixth grader who is currently assigned to Washburn Rural North and a son who is entering kindergarten at the same time. We live just over two miles from Washburn Rural North. We've been engaged with the board and your leadership team since the school plans were announced. We've been told everything was fine until about three days ago. When I say about three days ago, I mean, I literally called Friday and found out that everything was definitely not fine. And instead, we are scrambling this week to figure out what to do to get our daughter home safely. Meanwhile, the administration is suggesting that one of the options is that they would happily bus her seven and a half miles to the other middle school, but not two miles to the middle school that was just built. Our house is, some context for this and the zoning issue that I think is at play here. Our house is within three miles of multiple elementary schools in Washburn Rural's district. We, however, are zoned for Auburn Elementary, which is seven and a half miles away. This board has generously approved our daughter for transfers to Indian Hills for the last six years. A process that I thought we would get away from when we got to middle school, but that abruptly changed when I realized where you were building the new middle school and the plans to zone around that middle school. I reached out in twenty twenty-three, when the zoning was announced, to ask if we were really considering busing students from immediately across the street of the new middle school, seven and a half, eight miles to the other middle school. I was, Dr. McWilliams responded at the time and said he agreed with my assessment that it didn't make sense to bus kids from across the street of the new middle school, eight miles to the other middle school. At the same time, he assured me that I would not need to continue to go through the transfer process and instead families in my area would get a choice on which middle school they were to attend. This was good news to us. In the same thread, I shared a lot of my concerns where every year my daughter, we've had to wonder if this would be the year you didn't approve the transfer request and she got ripped from her friends. You know, we give up transportation service and we have to go through the transfer process. They assured me that was not the case here. There was no transfer needed. She would follow based on enrollment. Thankfully, that happened. We went through enrollment. She was simply assigned to Washburn Rural North. We assumed all was well. When transportation policy changes were occurring, I engaged regularly with Michael White on what I thought the impact was at the time, based on how I thought we stood with her assignment to Washburn Rural North. When the final policy came out, we ended up just outside the two mile range. So it landed pretty well for us, I thought. My wife actually called at the beginning of May when an email came out from the district suggesting you call them to get the distance calculated, gave them our address, confirmed that bus service was available, and we didn't need to fill out any forms because we were right outside the two mile zone. On Friday, our family's going through a lot of change, daughter going to middle school for the first time, son going to kindergarten for the first time. We're trying to arrange schedules, so I called to check on bus schedules and was told at that time that actually we were not covered by bus service and that my daughter was marked as a transfer. I'm familiar with the transfer process because I've been through it for six years. We did not do that this year. And I am familiar with the process to sign those transportation rights away as you go through the transfer process. None of that happened. No one ever communicated that we were outside of the attendance boundary and therefore giving up the service. That the understanding I had is that those families were given choice and they weren't boundary constrained. I, excuse me. It's honestly frustrating to me to watch it fumbled that badly. The communication process to be fumbled like that when I've been diligently communicating with the leadership and the board since twenty twenty-two with concerns around this. It's even more frustrating that the same administration that said they couldn't staff bus routes are gladly willing to bus my daughter eight miles to another middle school, but not one within two miles. And it's even worse for those right across the street. So it's really frustrating to hear all these transportation policy changes that need considered because you can't bus, staff bus routes. Meanwhile, there's inefficiencies like this built into the process that go unaddressed.
And Clint, you're getting right to your three minutes, so.
I appreciate that.
Not that I want to cut you off, but if you don't mind just kind of wrapping up.
I can do that. Thank you. I just want to say I don't believe there's resource problems here. This board's done an incredible job of equipping the administration with all the resources they'd need. They've gone through, you've issued capital projects to remodel every one of these elementary schools to build the largest middle school in the state of Kansas. You've done all these things. When they said they couldn't staff bus routes, you came out with policy changes. The board continues to step up. The administration, though, has done a poor job communicating these things and not addressing some of the obvious inefficiencies that exist that I imagine cause you these bus issues. So with that, I'll close. I appreciate the work all of you do, specifically Michael White, who told me you couldn't be here tonight, has been very engaged with me for the last two years, and I appreciate that. I just ask that we hold the folks accountable for stuff like this because I have a daughter who's devastated all weekend about something that should not be shocking to us a week before school starts. Thank you.
All right, and Clint, if you don't mind staying up for a minute, we do have two minutes if any board members want to ask any clarifying questions. Any questions from the board? And we received your email earlier today, so thank you for that as background as well.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Clint.
Oh, sorry.
I have a question.
Sorry. Go ahead, Chanel.
So I think, you know, this may be kind of a question for the group too, is when we say that there were people who were given the choice between Washburn Rural North and Washburn Rural Middle School, well, like, how many students or how many groups was that? Is that a percentage or just?
Yeah, so the comment that Clint made earlier, so Auburn does have a big footprint for an attendance center. That's done strategically. It's our smallest building, and so we don't really want to minimize that footprint. We want to keep as many kids in Auburn as we possibly can. And the reality is some of our other elementary schools have been hitting kind of at the maximum seams. That's why some of the work that you alluded to has been helpful because we're being able to generate a little more capacity in some of our larger elementary schools, which has been a positive moving into this upcoming school year. In the northwest section of the Auburn Attendance Center, what Clint stated is accurate. We chose to give families the choice. If they want to attend at their home school, which is Washburn Rural Middle School, and if they would rather go to Washburn Rural North, to your point, that's closer, it's almost like literally across the street, that's fine as well. My apologies to Clint. He stated that we have not communicated that clearly to those families. And so that's where we haven't been on the same page in regards to that communication piece. So that's the situation that we're in. The number of families in the northwest section that are Auburn Elementary families that had the choice, it was just under twenty families.
And so they didn't have to have been a transfer student like Clint's daughter. It was just where you live.
Right, yeah. They can make that decision at this time, yeah.
Or because in this case she went to Indian Hills, she had been part of Northern.
Well, she was on a transfer to Indian Hills, and that's why it was, yeah, she was rolled to Washburn Rural North. Yeah, and what he said was accurate. Yeah, that's it.
So then those twenty, twenty-ish families, then are they just by a rule transfer students or because they chose to go to?
Okay, so the ones that are choosing to go to Washburn Rural Middle School, it is true that they will have transportation because it's beyond the two, two miles. And the majority are going to Washburn Rural Middle. A small number are going to Washburn Rural North, but we do not have bus transportation that's going from that part of town north. The bus transportation is going south in that part of town, so.
I know my period for comments closed. I just want, he says a small number have chosen to. I just want to point out from the numbers he sent me today, it's over a third of them in that area are choosing to go to Washburn Rural North. So I, I just don't want it to sound like a small minority. There are a number of families that are choosing to transfer.
Six, yeah, I mean, honestly, six.
Yeah.
Twelve.
Yep.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you, Clint.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we will move on to section three, three point oh one is roll call. Everyone except for Brian and Michael are present. We'll move to three point oh two, approval of the agenda.
So move.
Second.
All right, there's been a motion and a second, all in favor. Motion passes five to zero. We'll move on to section four, disposition of business by consent.
I move for the disposition of business by consent, including payment of bills in the amount of six million eight hundred ninety-five thousand one hundred and sixty-four dollars and twenty cents.
Second.
Been a motion and a second, all in favor. Motion passes five to zero. That brings us down to section five, Administrator Reports, five point oh one, back to school updates.
Yeah, so I'll take the lead, but several members of the team also have some comments to share as well. So just a few things. So as we think about the upcoming school year and students actually returning to our schools next week, a few things have already been in the works. So kindergarten roundup, it took place just over a week ago, last week of July, in each of our sites. Exciting time to see the littles coming through the doors. That was a lot of fun for the teachers as well as those students. We had our back to school administrator meeting. It was held on July twenty-fifth to get the administrative team on the same page in regards to things that are going to be taking place this year. New staff academy, kudos to the Learning Services team. So that kicked off last week on Friday and also took place today. All of our staff are going to return to contract tomorrow. We're going to start our morning at Washburn Rural High School. All staff convocation. For those of you, and I think most of you around the table, board members are able to attend, that's fantastic. Thanks for doing it. There will be some reserved parking right at the front entrance of the school. And then we're going to open the doors right around seven o'clock in the morning. If your calendar allows for you to come early, you can kind of meet and greet and welcome back staff as they're walking through. There will be some folks that enter kind of through that roundabout drive that's on the north of the building. And then there's also probably a little bit more that will go from the east entrance that'll come in through that larger parking lot. So if you want to do some meet and greet as people are coming in, you're welcome to do so. There's a hot breakfast provided from seven to about seven forty-five. From seven forty-five until eight, we kind of start ushering everybody into the gym. And then I'll make opening comments for twenty minutes at all staff convocation. That goes from eight to eight twenty. And then we have other meetings that will be taking place starting at eight thirty. So anytime after eight twenty, you'd be free to take off and get your day started. So I'll be, I'll have the opportunity to recognize you that morning. So thank you for coming in, those of you that could make it. So I wanted to share that. There will be a lot of visit the school, meet the teacher kinds of activities through the course of this week, as well as Monday of next week. And then, of course, the big day, Tuesday next week, the twelfth, we'll be welcoming probably relatively close to six thousand students back to school for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, and we're looking forward to that opportunity. Next topic is bond construction updates. For the most part, at this time, things are tracking well, although there's still a lot of work to do in each of the sites. So we have Farley, we have Jay Scheidler, we have our middle school, and we also have Indian Hills. So if you're out and about and you drive past the parking lot of any of those schools right now, there are a lot of vehicles in the parking lot, for the most part, doing button-up kinds of activities. The reality is with bond construction, even with all staff coming back tomorrow, we can still share space and it's safe. And teachers can do what they need to do to get set up and ready to go for next week, and the workers are able to do what they need to do to finish up and button up projects. So we're going to be okay in regards to those projects. Chelsea, in the world of human resources, if you just want to give a quick update on how the hiring process moving into the twenty-five, twenty-six school year is shaping up, that might be helpful.
Sure, yeah, we've hired for every position that we needed. We have seventy new folks coming to us on the certified side. And on the classified side, we're fast and furious in my office right now and onboarding everybody that has been selected over the summer, and that is also shaping up really well. We're going to have some gaps, but that's kind of typical and we know how to navigate through that. The recent wage increases helped a lot, so we're doing okay.
Awesome. Everything's about teaching and learning and instruction. And that's Jeff's, Bailey Wick's, and Dr. DeSoto, if you want to provide an update on learning services. Thank you.
Yeah, we're very excited for two days of meaningful professional learning on August fifth and August seventh as we prepare our PLCs for the upcoming important work with their students. Lots of collaboration time and setting the stage for work on building data systems and assessment and monitoring learning. We will be offering optional launch week activities for teachers on August eighth and eleventh on timely topics, helping them have a strong start to their school year. And our resource orders and digital resources so far remain on track to be ready for the beginning of the school year. One thing I would point out on August fifth is we have ELA resource training for elementary and secondary teachers on that day. Our teachers are enthusiastic and excited about their new elementary ELA resources especially, and so we welcome that opportunity.
All right, and then as we move through the month of August into September, it turns into Brett's show at that point. He's in the process of building the budget for twenty-five, twenty-six. And we'll have an opportunity at some upcoming board meetings to do revenue neutral rate hearing, as well as a general fund budget hearing. We may also have a subcommittee meeting between now and then. So Brett's all over that, so those are some upcoming items in regards to his office. Rich, in regards to facilities, so we've already kind of mentioned bond construction projects. Outside of that, anything noteworthy to mention as we get a little closer to kids returning?
Sure. Our crews have gotten all of the cleaning and everything done, except in those areas that are under construction right now. We have a plan, working with the contractors, to get that done just as soon as they're out of the way. We've been working some crews over the weekend, this past weekend, to get that kind of caught up. But everywhere that didn't have construction is looking great. Places that had construction will be looking great before students get in. All of our capital outlay projects that we had planned for this summer are moving along. A lot of infrastructure, sidewalks, some new parking areas, some redesign of some parking lots, that's all done. Actually, our, today, the striping crew was out, striping those new parking areas. And so we're feeling pretty good about projects. Again, we'll be right down to the wire with the contractors, finishing up the construction stuff.
On all of those topics, any questions or points of clarity?
No, I'll just share that I've gotten feedback from people that the buildings look great. The middle school especially and the high school, being clean and ready to go, and so, yeah, it's exciting.
Great to hear. Thanks for sharing that. All right, last couple of updates in regards to bus transportation. We already started that conversation earlier this evening. We are continuing to communicate with families that have opted in to, yes, I would like bus service that's inside of two miles, that have not yet paid the fee. So we're keeping that communication going with those families. If you've been out and about in our school community, we are visibly recruiting for bus drivers as well as paras. So Chelsea, her team, as well as the transportation team, they're being as strategic as they can to keep moving things around, have yard signs out and a variety of things to do everything we can to get some new people coming through the doors, which will certainly be helpful to us. In regards to infrastructure, Rich, as it relates to transportation, we've got concrete poured for bike racks, racks themselves, hopefully will be coming in at the end of the week to get them installed. We have put in some additional sidewalks, some additional crosswalks. Sinage is also going up where crossing guards are going to be throughout the community. Pads reported late last week, and I'm starting. Uh, pads reported late last week and I'm starting to see signs come up as I'm out and about going to, uh, to the schools. And so no issues or concerns with any of that, so we're looking good. Uh, still going through the process of hiring, uh, crossing guards, but we do have some candidates in the system. And we also have some of our own employees that have said, hey, I think I might add that to my day. So it'll be a combination of probably some new as well as, uh, some of our current staff that will be doing those positions. Um, in regards to bus routes themselves, uh, transportation team, the reality is, um, that's a little bit of a fluid process because we still have kids that are notifying us, uh, families are moving out or families that are moving in. And so every time a one out or a one in happens, it just requires, uh, which bus and which route? And does that still make sense? Uh, they've identified, uh, neighborhood stops, uh, where it's safe and logical, uh, moving into this upcoming school year. And so soon we'll be able to communicate that to families, but we're not quite, uh, not to the point that we have that buttoned up to, uh, make it public quite yet. So a lot of moving parts, uh, it will all come together. We're looking forward to a very, uh, successful kickoff on Tuesday of next week. But there's still a lot to do without question, so.
I know my daughter did the walk of the new middle school and the all important, will my bag fit in the new locker? So I think she just used it next, used it to get a new backpack, but, um, really excited for school to start this next week, so. We are at that point in the summer that it is time, so. All right, thank you for that Scott. Um, we'll move on to section six, uh, six point oh one is board policy updates first read.
Yeah, so, um, this may be the last large batch. And so I, I share every meeting, uh, Kansas Association of School Boards, they have a legal team that go through all policies, uh, annually. In the summertime, based on the legislative session that ends because some laws have been tweaked or changed, sometimes board policies need to be revised as well. There's nothing, um, in regards to actual content that I need to explain here. Uh, these are just tweaks, uh, based on best practice from a legal standpoint's point of view or because a law has changed and we need to be compliant in regards to that. Um, there are a few policies that we actually will need to spend some time discussing, and, but that's not in this particular list. Uh, but when the time is right, when school is up and running, I'll bring those to you. Kind of as a one-off, uh, moving through the fall, so.
Any questions on any of those policies?
Um, I don't have a question on any of these policies, but I do have a question related to policies generally. Um, do we have, and I should probably know this, but do we have a policy specific and that will encompass kind of new technologies that's coming out? Let's say AI and things like that and how students deal with those things?
Could, depending on what decisions are made, uh, down the road, right. So in our, uh, student handbooks, uh, we have our, uh, approach, uh, to technologies in general as well as specifically to AI. Um, and so that has met our need thus far. Uh, in regards to AI, also, um, KASB Legal Counsel, um, has recommended a legal review and opinion, uh, to best meet the needs of students as well as staff moving forward. Um, some schools have policy, some legal councils have encouraged us to continue to explore a little bit more so we know what exactly we will want to put into the policy. I do think probably there will be a policy that eventually will come, but it hasn't been right out of the gate, um, yet.
And so if there's any sort of legislature or anything that happens, KASB would let us know.
Without question, yep, absolutely.
Does anyone, would anyone have a problem with these going on the consent agenda for next time?
Wonderful.
Go on consent for next time.
Yeah, great call, thank you.
All right, we'll move on to section seven, which is seven point oh one, which is board policy updates final read, not the same policies we said over the once and last time. So, sorry, I should have put those on the consent agenda too, but, um, any questions about any of these policies, if not, entertain a motion.
I move the Board of Education approve, update all CC, CD, CG, CGI, and CNA as presented.
Second.
Been a motion and a second, all in favor. Motion passes five to zero. We are down to communications.
And Monday's evening?
Yep.
Okay, um, we are now going to move into executive session, discuss, um, personnel matters pursuant to the exception of non-elected personnel under coma, uh, to discuss the budget pursuant to the exception for employer employee negotiations under coma to discuss students pursuant to the exception relating to actions adversely affecting, um, a student under coma at six fifty-three. We'll go into executive session for sixty minutes and resume the open, uh, board meeting at seven fifty-three PM. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, there's been a motion and a second, all in favor. Motion passes five to zero, we are in executive session.
Second, all in favor. Motion passes five to zero.
I move that the Board of Education approve the special education positions as discussed in executive session.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor. Motion passes five to zero.
I move the Board of Education approve the out-of-district students and transfer class as presented for the 25-26 school year.
Motion second, all in favor.
Second.
All right, there's been a motion third, all in favor. Motion passes five to zero. Just don't know what to do.